To see. Uh, let's see. Uh, Tom called me and let me know he couldn't make it.
Okay.
Email from out. Who sent an email earlier saying they couldn't make it?
Just.
Justin did.
Oh.
Okay.
I we've not heard from from Rich Napolitano.
No, okay. So, uh. Any additions or changes to the agenda, Paula?
None.
Okay, uh, the minutes of April 12th, 2021. Any corrections from anybody, changes? I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, I that's. Vera, were you there?
Yes.
Yeah, I I arrived about five minutes late.
Okay.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna.
Of citizens, do we have, have we end, I'll let all members into the meeting?
Hello. Can you let all the participants, other folks?
Coming on.
Hello, everybody who's joined the planning zoning meeting, we just approved our minutes from last week. Uh, so we have several members of the public who are in attendance. Uh, we do, um, we're at the point in our agenda, item five, audience of citizens. Is there anything anyone would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the? And for those of you that are dialing in, uh, don't have a video connection, just speak up, we're pretty informal about it. Hello, everyone. Okay, nothing, so we're opening up a public hearing. Uh, for the proposed zoning regulation revisions to permit it. An approved farm winery to have a farm brewery as an accessory use. And to reduce the minimum lot size for a farm retail store from 10 acres to 7.5 acres. So, uh, we have a regulation change proposed. Uh, public hearing is open, so our procedure for the public hearing is to. Present to the public what the proposed changes are. Then we ask for input from the public. And then the typical way that we would proceed would be to, at some point, close the the. Public hearing if we think it's appropriate to do so tonight. And either opt to go for voting on that this evening or wait for voting until a later point in time, but the public can't weigh in on our. Debate, once we close a public hearing and all information that we need to receive from the public and perspectives from the public. Has to come in through the public hearing. Uh, once a public hearing is closed, we can't take any public input. So I'm scrolling through. Our packet that we received. And. Paula, do you, would you like to speak to a summary of this quickly? It's a revision to section nine, section 21.5. Uh, 21.4 actual, oh, that's the watershed, but this is the, um. The farm winery regulations.
Yes, I I will. Uh, first, I'd like to state for the record that the proper public notifications were made. Uh, we posted a legal notice on the town website. And because this is, these two changes affect the, uh, RA zone and our RA zone abuts and is within 500 feet of other towns. So in addition, we need to notify each one of those towns. And also notify their council of government, so notification also went up to Crog, the capital regional council of government and the CCOG, which is the Southeast Council of Government. Which Wyndham and Lebanon are are CCOG. Um, these are. Minor, uh, changes to the, uh, to the definitions when, um. The town adopted the regulations to allow a farm winery. The state of Connecticut, um, only had a farm winery as their, um, as a use. Under agriculture, um, they, after about a year after we adopted the, the, um. Agriculture, uh, the farm winery regulations. Um, they adopted it, the state adopted a new category called farm brewery. So we're revising the definitions. Uh, to, uh, define farm winery as to also include the making of beer and ale as an accessory use. On a proved farm winery. And. Said, changing the word wine in towards the end of the sentence to, uh, these alcoholic beverages. And then. Just saying that the, any farm winery. Uh, would need to meet the the regulations of the state of Connecticut for designated Connecticut grown farm winery. Uh, and farm brewery, depending upon what they were doing. Um, and the other changes, um. Was also adopted, it, the original one was also adopted at the same time on on agriculture. Created a, um. A, a use of farm retail store, uh, but required a 10 acre parcel. Uh, the commission feels that it'd be more appropriate to to bring that down to about seven and a half acres. There's one or two 10 acre parcels with the amount of frontage on the state road, so it's, it's sort of. Um, having, it's having a use available that nobody would qualify for, so at seven and a half acres, uh, we have a few more properties that would. Uh, meet that. To have a farm retail store.
Okay. Uh, this, in essence, it's let, uh, just trying to broaden the strength of our agricultural community in town. Uh, at that point. Any questions from members of the commission about this, we've debated this, we talked through it, it was a relatively minor revision regulation. Uh, uh, regulation revision, excuse me. Anything, I'll, let me open it up to the public, um, if there's any questions, Mr. Beck.
Uh, yes, Henry Beck, uh, 41 Sleepy Hollow Road. I'm just curious, um, there's no requirement that any agriculture actually be, uh, grown with respect to the beer, right? There's no requirement that there be hops grown on premises or anything else, they can just, uh, manufacture the beer, is that correct?
That's not correct, in order to be a farm brewery, the state of Connecticut require, has regulations just like they have for the, the farm winery. Where X amount of the crops that are used in the beverage have to be grown on that, on that property and or in the state of Connecticut.
So, uh, somebody could run a brewery but, uh, get the agricultural products from somewhere else in the state.
I don't know exactly what the regulations are, I don't think so, but this, the farm brewery would have to be an accessory used to an existingly approved farm winery.
Mm-hmm.
So a standalone farm brewery wouldn't be possible anyway in Columbia.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Rick, this is Ian Dan, 186 Route 6.
Are you?
Yo. So I, my question is, is these regulations only apply to the residential district, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
More specifically.
More specifically, the residential agricultural zone.
Yes, Vera is correct. That's the proper name of the district.
Any other questions or comments from the public on this?
I got an email, excuse me, I got an email from Glenn Nichols, Jr., who.
Okay.
Um, says, I was planning to, on attending the Zoom meeting tonight, but can no longer make it, just wanted to make it known that I am supportive of all the, the changes. For the farm winery to have a farm brewery and to reduce the minimum lot size for a farm retail store from 10 to seven and a half acres.
Not so noted, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Questions? Are we all set on this? Uh, how does the commission feel, are you ready for us to close a public hearing so that we can consider it?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on these regulation revisions. That means I need a second from somebody.
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on closing this? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Um, is that, that's unanimous, as I see it, as, a- any, um, objection or extensions? Okay, so the public hearing is closed. I'm gonna go back to our agenda. I'm moving all around here, bear with me. Uh. So we're gonna go to, um. Item six, unfinished business on this topic. Uh, what's the pleasure of the commission? Uh, why don't we discuss this and vote on it this evening, that's my choice, anyone not agree with that?
Uh, I don't agree with that.
We might need some additional information.
Well, let's ask, ask for that information.
Okay, um, why don't I start? First thing I want to talk about is the intent of the existing regulation. And I think intent of the existing, in my opinion, the intent, intent of the existing regulation has to do with. Farm grown produce being, being manufactured into wine and sold. On, on the farm, that the majority of the produce has been grown. I'm not sure, um, I don't know exactly what the state of Connecticut farm brewery requirements are. And how much percentage of the. Product would be grown on the particular farm that's being brewed at. Um, so I think that's an important, important issue to understand. The, um. As, as, as these, as these wineries slash breweries slash. Or retail stores become more commercial, then I think the intent of a farm. Rate, as far as property taxes is concerned versus a commercial rate of property taxes is concerned, should be discussed. Is these, these, the proposal is taking. What is primarily a simple winery and growing it into something that is much more commercial. And will have outside input, outside produce, outside products brought in and. And in my opinion, this is becoming more of a commercial venture as opposed to a farm venture. Uh, in, in, in that respect, I think it's important to understand what the tax, the property tax implications might be. So. Bob, you vote on that?
I'd like to speak, I'm, I'm sorry, go please, why don't you give us everything you, your, um, that are your questions? I, I have some thoughts on that, I, I want to make sure everyone else has a chance to talk.
Okay, well, I, I, I've got a couple of other things too. Right, right now, the, the farm retail store has particularly requirements, the way we've written it, um, if it's expanded to a brewery. Um, then that's fine, uh, there's a 500 foot frontage requirement on a state road, 70% of sales area from the, has to be from the owner's farm. 30% maximum for farm goods or equipment. And the maximum size of the structure will be 7,500 square feet. The question I have is, does that stay the same if it becomes a, a winery slash brewery, or is that going to change? Again. My concern is, is this is growing into a more commercial venture as opposed to just a simple winery that. Is, is, is using produced, produced grapes that are from the farm, so. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, as far as property tax considerations, I believe that that's outside the scope of what we're legally permitted to consider as, as a planning and, uh, zoning agency. And so I, I would suggest that maybe that's not a valid basis or a valid item to pursue in a discussion here. Um, as far as the other questions that you had. I think understanding the intent or the rationale behind pursuing this was making it easier. Uh, to have a farm winery operation and also, uh. Broaden, broaden the scope, we were approached with a request to modify the regulations. By, uh, one individual that potentially is going to be creating hard cider. And one site but wants to be able to market it, uh, through a local farm winery. And, uh, please jump in and, and correct me if I'm incorrect about this. And this was an attempt with a simple change of the regulations to allow that. Um, we know, keep in mind that, to the best of my knowledge, the assessor doesn't have a different rate of taxing farms. Except that farm operations, uh, can have their land taxed at a lower rate if it's in grassland preservation. Or if some of the land that they own is in woodland preservation. Uh, so, you know, but I really don't want to go into the tax implications of this. Because it's not a valid zoning, uh, uh, basis of evaluation of, of a. A regulation. You know, I think we're all concerned about it, but we, we can't use that as a justification. And I, and I don't see these as becoming overly commercial because they're geared toward farm oriented operations and there are regulations at the state level. And I would have loved to have gotten more information if you wanted it while you were in public hearing mode, I think it would have been more effective. To raise these questions in public hearing mode as opposed to when we're in private discussion mode. Because our ability to add additional data into what we're considering is very limited. Um, I, I just don't see it the same way you do as becoming. Things, making this going overtly more commercial or, or much more commercial in a way that's negative. Uh, for the agricultural community in town.
Rick, I believe that the, uh, existing regulations that we have allow for hard cider under winery.
We, they, they do, from my perspective also, but I think this makes it evident overwhelmingly more clear. So that there's no question that it's allowed.
It already is allowed, it's allowed under our existing regulations, hard cider specifically is noted in our regulations. But we don't, we don't need it, we don't need a brewery to include hard cider.
Well. It's. We had a request to expand, I'm very much in favor of this change. Um, it doesn't sound like you are, uh, for whatever reason, and I respect that. Rich?
I had.
Um. At one point, I believe they wanted to expand to a beer brewery. Because not everybody drank wine. And there were people that also liked to have beer, beer and wine kind of always. Go together with restaurants and, and different bars, some are just beer and wine, so I, I believe. That expansion was for that factor, I'm not a big wine drinker. I'm not a big beer drinker either, but I do like beer and occasional wine, so it was a nice option for them to go. Either direction with, with the, uh. Winery. That was my impression. And I, I don't have a problem with it being a brewery either.
Okay. Um, Vera, I think you were trying to speak to this also.
Yeah, I was gonna speak, um, as you said, you wanted to, you wish we had, uh, mentioned our some concerns under the public hearing. Um, the only thing I can say is I didn't want to speak during that section because you were asking just for public input. So, uh, did wait and, uh, voted to close that as well. Um, but because, you know, the, I had a couple issues, um, if you keep expanding and expanding. Um, should we be looking at some of the, um. The parking and other safety issues, seeing that it is in the residential agricultural zone. Um, the other question I had was, if we're gonna be changing, um. The regulation, we're adding additional usage, but we're also in exchange. For an additional, asking for additional change of the reduced in the lot size, but yet we're adding. A lot more potential use. Um, the other question I had is we're revisiting this regulation, are we revisiting this, um, as a. Project of the commission or was the, um, I might have missed it from last meeting? Um, was it in a form, a formal application and was the application fee paid?
Oh, if you, may I, may I answer that?
You know, what we, what we had is, we had. Um, some members of the local agricultural community. To be blunt, we, but we try to bend over backwards to help them because they're in a, in a business that is. A challenging business to be in, and I, I think, uh. As, as a community, we're agricultural oriented. Uh, and we, they discussed some minor changes that they thought would help going forward to the regulations. And we said, while we're in the pandemic notice mode where we don't have to take out an ad in the newspaper, that could be a project of the commission to pursue. As opposed to needing, uh, 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 public requested. Uh, change to the regulations, um, or, or an individual requested change, it could be something that was prompted by the commission itself. And we're always willing to, to approach a regulation change where we think it affects the, the, the. Public as a whole. So this was an accommodation because we felt it was appropriate to pursue. And. That's, it's as simple as that, and I don't, I don't see the same. Um. I don't have the same perspective with regard to. Expanding the use, we're just expanding what products can be offered. Uh, a given farm winery is probably not going to do a ton more business, but it's going to give another outlet for locally produced goods in another way. And it will round out with the offerings, but it, but we still have regulations that cover. Any potential overuse of a site with a limitation on parking, the number of people that can be accommodated, the size of the building, none of that's changing. We're just simply trying to clarify a, a regulation, so.
So you, so you don't think by offering. XYZ plus ABC plus DEF and you have all this additional offerings, you don't. See that changing any of the, I mean, it must, it must kind of change something because you are expanding the business as a whole. And usually when you expand the business at a whole, I mean, it does affect, um. You know, traffic flow, parking.
What's, what's the point? What's the point, you know, i- is it going to expand it in a way that we need to analyze this back to, to base one? We, we had that conversation going on last, last week while we were in commission discussion, I mean. We have, have a refined regulation that we thought was appropriate to bring to public hearing, we had a. A plenty of time to address all of these questions at a different point in time, if you're not in favor of it, okay, but. We, 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 we discussed these in our commit, uh, uh, commission meetings and we thought it was.
Well, I was, I was present, I was present, I, I was present during the last meeting, I was five minutes late and I don't believe this was covered. In the first five minutes, so I was not absent for when this was, was addressed, I mean, I have been absent in the past due to, you know. Uh, other obligations, um, but I was just bringing up these other. Issues that maybe people were not aware of or something that we should, you know, examine a little bit further. If you don't think there is a thing we need to examine any further, then. I guess that's the way it is.
Can I step in us for a minute here, Rick? Is that okay?
Sure.
Um. We have regulations for the large acreage and small acreage or. Like, I don't think we call it small, we call it just farm, uh, wineries, the, the large acreage, which is our largest potential, uh, public tasting area. The total seating is limited to 100. It's not based on what somebody is drinking, it's limited to 100. The, the parking, number of parking is limited, it's, so it's, we've already in the regulations have defined this. And the question that, and the, the question came up quite a while ago and it's. So it was not in the forefront of my mind, but if you look at, um, the, the, uh, regulation revision, where I've placed, I've. Copied our existing farm winery definition, if you look on the. The fifth line, it says, for the purposes of these regulations, wine shall include any alcoholic beverage. Including bandy, brandy, Odevis, cider and hard cider obtained by the fermentation of the natural sugar contents of fruit such as grapes, apples and peaches. So if it all, it's, if it's any alcoholic beverage. Wouldn't that also be a brewery beer? And the other thing to remember is this is an accessory use. It's not a brewery, it's a winery producing wine that can also prove, produce, uh, beer in a. Um, the, the definition of accessory is subordinate. Um, so it's a smaller scale and, and Bob, I want to correct you, you were talking about that this then means. A farm retail store is a brewery, these two topics are totally, totally separate. We're changing the definition, which is item one, item two is changing the requirements for a farm store. A farm store can't have a brewery. Only, only a winery could have, um, a, a farm brewery. In terms of the taxes, the tax for the, the property, it's still farmland. But the tax assessor has another category, category called personal property taxes. Um, for personal property, which sounds like. It's our furniture in our house, personal property is actually business equipment. Um, wineries, farm retail stores have equipment to get added to the grand list.
I, I don't want to go overboard addressing the tax implications.
No, I just wanted to point that out, that's, I'm done, I'm done.
That's something that we do, that's not, uh, uh, within the realm of our purview.
The, uh, you're, Paula, when you said the definition of a winery, you included cider and hard cider and any alcoholic beverage from fruits. Grapes, for example, um. Beer is not made from that, beer is made from hops, which is a wheat product.
Yes, some.
Or berry.
The commission discussed that and the commission felt that it was, would be better to clarify this, uh, and include. Um, this as an accessory use, use.
I'm not saying that I'm against this, I'm just saying I think we need a little bit more discussion and maybe more analysis on. Or investigation in the rest of the, the rest of the section that deals with wineries, you know, you've, the thing you, the thing that was sent out today only included the first paragraph. There are about two more pages of instances and regulations for the winery that I think we need to review in light of including a brewery. One of which is, you, which you alluded to was the large, large winery, which is over 200 acres, a regular winery, which can be less than 200 acres. Those types of things, the parking requirements, the number of seats, again. I, I'm inclined to agree with, with Vera that if you add a brewery to this particular winery, it's going to increase business. And I'm sure that whoever, whoever owns this does not want to limit themselves to 20 seats in a brewery.
Well, it's 100 seats that is limited, it's limited to 100 seats in the, um, public tasting area, that's what we permit currently.
Over 220 acres, if it's under 20 acres, 20 seats.
Yes. This. The person, we currently only have one, one farm winery. For a second farm winery that would be on a, the smaller farm category. They would have to come in and, uh, the special permit application to the commission to have that. Um, and if they wanted to have, also offer, uh, beer, they would apply for that as well.
There's a couple extra, um, fairly large slots that are currently for sale now, doesn't mean we, we wouldn't get another facility.
So you'll get an application. Yes, this isn't, this isn't, um, permitted by right, like building a house. It's, um, it would be a special permit to the commission.
But it doesn't mean someone else can make a special permit, we just happen to have one right now, I think that was the other point.
Right, right.
You know, just something to think about is, you know, yes, you might want all this in this one particular location, that's the only one we have right now.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily, but it's a, but it's a zone regulation change, it's not a particular parcel.
Actually, it's just a, it's a, it's a change to the definition, we're not changing 21.5, uh, for the large. For any of the winery, it's just changing the definition. Which is the appropriate place to make a change.
Okay. So we, we have a regulation, uh, change proposed before us, uh, Bob has indicated that he would like to do. More investigation, we really can't do that because we're not in the public hearing mode, the time to have done this. Would be where, when we were investigating the regulation prior to going to public hearing or when we were in the public hearing mode. Uh, as far as. There's, there's been, been, I, I thought plenty of discussion of this. There's, there's been, been, I, I thought plenty of discussion of this. Um, for, for the members that, that, that did discuss it at prior meetings. Um, my perspective at this point, I would ask us to put this to a vote this evening. Uh, and I think we, we've heard enough information between our meetings in the past and. The public hearing didn't bring any new data. It was a matter of presenting what the finished regulation was and. Uh, looking for public input and public includes members of the commission. Uh, but then, then commission members can weigh in on their perspective on it. And ask questions to the extent that we have the data available. Uh, once we've closed the public hearing. So I would propose uh, that we move forward with this to a vote on the regulation as proposed. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept um. The regulation change as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Rich, you're muted. I saw your, your lips moving.
We can't hear you.
I also thought, okay, I also thought we had plenty of discussion on um, over a couple of meetings with. Similar conversations that we weren't really expanding any of the winery. We're just giving them more to do, more. Choices within the winery, within their current footprint, within their current size, traffic, parking. Nothing was changing. It was just. They were offering more product per se.
More flexibility.
Yeah, and we, and we did go around a bunch of this stuff. Maybe not in super detail, but I do remember going through on a couple of occasions talking about it.
Any, anyone else want to bring anything up, up about this? Uh, and it was Alex. Did you second this?
Yes.
Okay, um, all those in favor of passing this regulation change, give me a hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that looks like four in favor, against.
That would be me.
So that's Vera and Bob are voting against. Any extensions? No, uh, motion passes forward to two. Thank you, everybody, and I appreciate your perspective on this. Um, next, we're going to move forward. Uh, to uh, open a public hearing for the proposed zoning regulation revision, section twenty one point four. Columbia Lake watershed protection overlay zones on. The, uh, the residential agricultural district for clarification and to allow zoning approval for. Uh, I think you should say in the minutes one time change. Uh, and allow any excess mitigation to be carried forward. So a little back, background on this, uh, public hearing is open on this regulation change. Um, Paul, I'll have you speak to which section specifically, but the concept here has to do with the fact that. If somebody has gone the extra mile and done as much mitigation as possible, reasonably possible. Um, during a project, uh, they should be able to carry forward any of the excess um. The excess mitigation uh, to enable an easier time for minor changes going forward. And there's also some other, other input that we received from the um. Uh, lake management. Group uh, that, that they had some strong feelings that we've incorporated into this regulation, you know? Literally almost everything with regard to lake health. Has more, has more coming from them than it does from us. We're just the enabling. Container for a lot of what their efforts are, so we pay a lot of deference to the lake management committee. Um, that being said, I would hope that. Uh, Paula will speak on this a little bit to just summarize the regulation change. And Dan O'Neil here is from the uh. Lake, Lake Management Committee and Dan, I'm sure you want to speak to this also. And I know Bob, you've been very um, active in the past and I'm sure we'll get public input on this. So. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Paula. And uh, Paula, if you could weigh in and then from there, maybe go to Dan and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you. Uh, first I want to uh, also for this particular public hearing notify. Uh, state for the record that um, that hearing was notified. Based on uh, state of Connecticut current standards under COVID was posted on our website. Our lake is not within 500 feet of um, our, our lake district is not within 500 feet of a budding towns. So we did not need to, to notify anyone else. And before I forget, um, under public comment. Um, again, Glenn Nichols um, is um. Apologize for not being able to attend, attend the meeting. Uh, but he wanted to make, make it known that he is supportive of all the changes, including the, the changes to the revisions to the Columbia zoning regulation, section twenty one, four. I will say that the commission is not taking this change lightly. Um, that I started drafting revisions in two thousand and seventeen. Primarily because as I was trying to read the regulations, I. Kept going in circles, trying to understand what it was trying to say. Um, so I started making uh, revisions in that regard. The um, the regulations. Um, most of the regulations are the same as the um. Uh, requirements, regulations are the same. Uh, as they used to be. Some of the paragraphs are in different places now that so it flows and it reads a little bit better. Um, there are two areas um, that are policy changes. One of which, and I'll throw up the, the regs in a, in a second, the proposed regs in a second. Um, one of which. Um, allows um, if you're doing work on your property and, and you've. Um, done additional work that you have um. You've more than what you've needed to do, you've, in terms of um, mitigating um, phosphorus runoff. Um, if you've done more than you need to do, you can bank that extra. For it uh, into a future project, which that's new. And that's a good thing because it's, it's helping people um. Uh, take care of the lake and do a little bit more if they, if they wanted to do a little bit more. Um, and the other policy change is allowing um. I'll call it self mitigation of a property using a hundred, adding a hundred and twenty square feet of surface change or less. Um, self mitigation still goes through the zoning agent. But they wouldn't have to do a nutrient allocation worksheet. Um, and where the entire property is, is assessed. Um, the hundred and twenty square feet is the maximum. It's. It's one amount that you could do two sixty square foot projects over a um, a couple of years if you wanted to. Um, I'm going to share my screen. I've talked to. Um, that's the one I'm sharing. Okay. So. Everybody can see this? Everybody see this? Okay, thank you. So um. Heard from uh, Henry Beck. And uh, today, and it's a couple of changes. Spoke with him and he will. Uh, he apologized for being a little late on this. But uh, he has some good, good comments that I've incorporated and read. Um, most of them, Henry's an attorney. He can't help it. He has to make sure that everything. Follows all the, the, the best practices in terms of um, interpretation down the line. Um, so the, under the intent and purposes that he suggested on the third line, a third paragraph to add. Um, as defined and described in the Columbia Lake Management Plan. So that's one change and a skip over one, go to, go to another minor one. Um, and under that exception. For self mitigating, he suggested that we also reference um, two sections and not just the one section that, that I had referenced. Now. Um, both um, Henry Beck and, and Dan O'Neil. Have been working and helping me to, to pull this language together and Dan and I thought we had it. And then Henry took another look at it and Dan took another look at it and I took another look at it and we decided that. The language in B should be revised slightly. This, not changing the policy, but just making the language so it's a little bit easier um, to understand. And we, at, what was it? Five o'clock today? We sort of decided that we, we were going forward with this. And the other thing is the um. This paragraph right here was something that was added. After the ad hoc lake commission committee. Um, did work. It was a group of peoples right before I started here, so it, it had to have been. Uh, fourteen, fifteen, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, something like that. That this was added. After that ad hoc commission and like management doesn't feel it's needed. Um, Bob Courtman, Dr. Courtman, the lymphologist doesn't think it's, is needed. Dan can speak more to that. But it's something that um, I would recommend that we take this out of, out of the language. That's all I have on this at this point.
Oh, um, item. Uh, so you're, the, the red item B that you're showing on the, the shared screen. Is it a substitute for the current suggested item B that we came forward with?
Correct. It doesn't change the policy. It's just phrasing it differently.
Okay.
And it was something that, that attorney Beck.
This suggested change uh, over the, over what's currently proposed. Uh, that was voted on by the commission to come to public hearing.
Correct, correct, which is why it's in red.
Okay. All right. Anything else here?
Not for me.
Any questions from the commission or the public about this? Comments?
I would think Henry Becker or Dan O'Neil would want to speak.
Do we go through all of the, why don't we go through the, the rest of this and then we'll let uh. Uh, Dan and then Henry or Henry and Danny, either order. Um, speak to the various changes. I just want to get all, all of this.
That, that just the changes in red?
Yes.
Um, this section here is just talking about uh, the purpose of the regulation and it's talking about. To meet the, based on the Columbia Management Plan. So this last line, Henry felt that just referring back to the fact that. It's defined and described of the Columbia Men's Lake Management Plan.
Okay.
That, that one. And then the other one is here. Uh, for um, exception for the mitigating parcel surface change. I had just had uh, twenty one, four, four that we were working, that I had presented to you. And he felt that twenty one, four, five should also come into play, which is.
Or is that the extent of the suggested changes?
Other than, other than this B, yes.
Okay. Uh, should we speak at this point to the um. Uh, the reference to the one inch of runoff uh, changed in that, that seems to be one of the larger changes.
Yes. Um, we certainly can. Um, the L Mac um, met. Last few weeks ago and took them, had a vote. Uh, recommending that, well, Dan's a better person to speak to this, but that the um, to. Uh, encourage the commission to, to uh, make these. Adopt the regulations as we, as was presented to L Mac. Uh, a few weeks ago, with the exception of, of pulling out this in the course of compliance with the foregoing. Uh, the one inch language, pulling that, that small, that three line paragraph out.
Okay. Then are we ready to hear from Dan or from Henry?
Should I keep this up, do you think?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Dan, you want to speak to this next? Henry?
There we go. There you are. Okay, got me? Okay, sorry about that. Uh, so this revised regulation without the red parts I took to the last L Mac meeting. Um, we had discussed it in depth prior to that in other meetings as well. So it's just a recap going over the finer points that we had worked out. Um, to get the uh, the wording um, done. And we had a vote that uh, we chose to accept those regulations, all the black, the way it existed then. Um, including the two. Policy changes that had to do with the up to a hundred and twenty square feet without going through nutrient allocation. And including the um, banking, if you have it of uh. Of additional work beyond what you need to do for phosphorus. And then we also. Sorry. Um, we also discussed that one paragraph right there. Um, that Paula was talking about. Can we see? Yeah, where's uh?
In gray there?
In gray there. All right. And so that's a paragraph that we discussed in the past. We went over again this last time. We discussed the fact that it's. Um. It kind of says two different things. And it's confusing and there's no need for it to be there at all. Um, we discussed whether or not we felt that, that we agreed that that didn't need to be in there anymore and I can explain the details if you like. We also discussed whether or not we felt it was necessary to have Dr. Courtman or any other lymphologist. Uh, confirm what we were saying and we felt that we didn't need to do that because we did have a good understanding of what this meant and how the nutrient allocation. Process works. And so L Mac voted to advise. Um, that P and Z adopt these revised regulations with the exception of that grayed out paragraph.
Okay. Now, yeah, let me wait. I, I just want to say thank you for all the work that L Mac did and you did personally, Dan.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
I really, really appreciate it. I mean, we have a crown jewel here in, in the, the form of our lake. Uh, but and it, and it's come about in large part because of L Mac and, and so much community interest, not, not because of planning and zoning action. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, and uh, that being said, uh, so you would be in favor of us getting rid of the grayed out portion and. I'd assume the, the wordsmithing that Henry helped us do by taking section B above it and changing it to the. The verbiage that is, was suggested by Henry. Um, all well taken. Uh, uh, Henry, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, certainly. Thank you. And I thank Dan too. Uh, I'm a member of L Mac and uh, was pleased to vote for this and. Your hard work at the Planning and Zoning Commission, Paula's and, and Dan's as well. And I won't take credit. For the language in B because it's a joint effort of all three of us to uh, get the nuance that we. Nuances that we wanted to be sure were there so that it was quite clear how to construe it. And so I, I think that that's fine. Um, uh. I also was on L Mac in favor of taking out the gray uh, wording. I, I would like to go to twenty one, point four, point one. Because perhaps Paul and I uh, didn't quite hear each other the same way when we were talking. I like a slight difference. Where it says as, where it says a, as defined and described. I prefer it to say uh, as described and determined. And the real, the, the critical word is the word determined. Uh, because you have to refer to the uh, Columbia Lake Management Plan to determine the maximum. Uh, parcel allocation in order to have uh, that incorporated by reference. We, uh, from that document, we want to be able to not have any uh, uh. Ambiguity uh, that, where you find that, that information. So saying determined is a. I think a good legal use of the word to make sure that people understand that that's where you go to find that number.
Okay.
And uh, I appreciate Paula's help and everybody's patience with the fact that uh, I wasn't able to uh. Get to this until over the weekend and uh, and Paula and Dan were very accommodating and I think it works well and I'm sure. from our discussions in in L Mac, they would all also agree to these red changes.
Yeah, I agree with that too, because we haven't changed anything. We only clarified something that could have been misunderstood. One sentence.
Are the Dan, if you and Henry are done, why don't we open this up to the public for any comment that they both like might like to offer? Paula, try it's harder for me to identify who can speak when we're in full screen. But
I was just gonna ask.
Yeah.
If you need that back up, just holler and I can pop it.
I will. Any member of the public that would like to speak to this?
Rick, Ian, Dan, one eight six root six. I just had a question. Being a member of the I W W C. I didn't know if it made sense similar to how you guys had worked with L Mac to put it in front of that board to see if there's any comments, concerns on that end.
You know what? I probably didn't explore that. Simply because we weren't making any substantive changes. We were more clarifying and making easier to use this. Maybe the the banking of the nutrient allocation. Allotment and the one time mitigation for a hundred and twenty square feet. But they're they're not the agency that that's within the purview of. Any thoughts from member other commission members or members of the public? Is there a thought that we need to go down out to inland wetland for any comments on this?
May I interject? I talked with John Valenti, who was our wetlands agent for thirty years, I guess. And he so he was involved with this from the beginning and he and I worked through this. So he's been a part of this right along and he felt it was it did not need to go to inland wetlands.
Ian, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I just said that's a key piece of information that I'd be comfortable with what John has to say about it. I just said use that that as a tool, not necessarily a governing piece, but as a tool when we're reviewing some submissions.
And anything else from the public question, comment? Mr. Beck?
Like to make a comment as a member of the public now. Henry Beck, forty one sleepy hollow road. I just want to point out for the record that the document isn't redlined to show changes to the existing regulation because in fact it is reworded, renumbered and reorganized as Paula had said and would be very difficult to follow if it had been so redlined. We have talked here about the substantive areas of change, but it should be noted that there had been a lot of wording changes that should not again change the substantive interpretation of it, but time will tell.
Any other comments from anyone else? No. I I'd suggest that what we do is close the public hearing at this point unless there's anything anyone else from the commission would like to get on the record or inquire about. What is there any sense from the commission that there's anything else we need to reach out to do or anyone else we would need to reach out to because we should leave the public hearing open if that's the case. Otherwise, I would suggest we close the public hearing and then go to contemplating action on this. Okay, that said, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I see a second to that? Bob? Any discussion of that? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Vera, what's your?
All right, yeah.
That's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. I I just have to say I really appreciate the work from L Mac that comes in. What you've done over time is a model in the state of Connecticut and actually beyond for what what you can achieve with, you know, public learned public interaction to protect a resource. I feel way more strongly about this than I'm even letting on now, but I want to say thank you. So that being said, we're going to move into discussion of this as part of our meeting. I would ask a simple question to the members of the commission. Are you comfortable voting on the motion this evening? Or would you like to gather any additional information? Well, would you rather discuss it? Or or defer action to a later time? Any thoughts on that?
I'm good.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with it too. So let's let's go move into the discussion of this on our our agenda. I'm just back my agenda. Bear with me. So this is under item six two discussion is part of our regular meeting. I'm I would be very comfortable accepting the regulation as presented this evening with all of the changes as we modified. That Paula did it with the additional red modifications as as they were proposed. Would anyone like to see a finished regulation in final form without any? I I'm comfortable except accepting the regulation or or voting on it based on what was presented to us. I assume everyone else is then. No, I didn't hear anything.
Yes.
Very comfortable.
Okay, so Paula, did you have sample motion for this? Or should we just?
I didn't because I didn't know exactly what you would be wanting to change. And I didn't know that Henry, Dan and I would be proposing changes of our own.
Changes that you pose this evening, I think we're all very comfortable with. That's substituting item B with that verbiage. And then the other wordsmithing that you did, some of it before the meeting and some during during the public public hearing. I would make a motion that we accept the proposed regulation change to section twenty one point four, the lake water protection overlay zones as presented at the public hearing this evening.
I second that motion.
Any discussion of that?
Yes, did we include the fact that the that the grayed out text was going to be deleted?
That's that's what I was referring to by as presented during the public hearing. Okay, yes, I'm glad you're clarifying that.
That's a great point. I think that it probably should be part of the motion is and to delete the the special requirements for the one inch flush of stormwater.
Okay, so I'm going to modify my motion to refer to deletion of that section and I'm going to go to it so I can name it more accurately. I need some help here.
It's on page two. It the full language is in the course of compliance with the foregoing for all new non pervious surfaces greater than a hundred square feet an area, the first one inch flush of stormwater shall be treated with a BMP as identified in section twenty one four seven.
Okay, so I'm in favor of deleting the paragraph immediately after section twenty one point four point five. B.
E.
So I'll modify my motion. Can I have a second again for that? Okay. So all those in favor of accepting the regulation as presented and and modified during the public hearing this evening, say aye. Abstentions? That would appear to be unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the work. I really appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you, Dan and and Henry.
Thank you all.
Yes, guys.
One of the most significant things that we did with this is the banking of of the neuter of the best of the nutrient credits. Because that gives people doing major projects an incentive to do everything they possibly can. Instead of them doing just what they have to do to justify their current current application.
And that's sometimes sometimes it's easier to do it when you're under major construction.
Exactly.
Doing it afterwards.
So you know, to the extent we've made the the nutrient allocation process purposely easy to administer by a homeowner. That was always at the core of it. And that was his suggestion when we started this with Bob Courtman. Make it easy to do and people will comply. Make it complicated and they will do. Well, I don't know that that these were his words, but he said, make it easy to comply with and be by doing this. And it's relatively easy to understand or for most people and it may not everybody, but look what look what we've achieved and that net improvement in our lake quality over a generation or part of a generation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Night. Bye, Dan.
Okay, next up is new business. Anything, Paula?
Nothing.
This said, I'm item eight, discussion of the subdivision regulations, anything that you feel is pressing to bring up? Because if not, I suggest that we defer this to another meeting.
I had a brief conversation with Mike Lester and he's continuing to gather information. That's it.
Okay. So we need more info on communications and reports.
I have one thing, which is actually old business. I guess it's communications. At the last meeting, we were requested by a Mrs. Dubey of one fifty four root six to look into the property at one forty nine and one fifty nine root six. In the minutes, it's noted that we would respond back to her at this meeting about anything that we have found. Specifically zoning enforcement officer was supposed to get in touch with her and explain the status of her work. And I was wondering if that had been done.
That had been done. It's done frequently and it was done again recently.
Was Mrs. Dubay contacted by the Z E O?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Was she contacted between last meeting and this meeting?
I honestly don't know. I I don't. I did not follow up on that. It's my my apology. I talked to the Z E O and asked her if she'd been communicating and she said I talked to her probably close to once a week. So.
Okay, Kathy did call me today and asked me just to say she's we're sorry she couldn't be at this meeting. I'll say, well, if we had any more light to shed on this, I would talk to her.
I will. I will. I will get back to get the information. I I apologize.
Okay, I would like an update for Connie. And I'd really like to know if she's reached a stalemate on this. Because I know she's worked hard to bring forward. For example, I know that according to Kathy Dubay. She reached out to find groups that would be willing to clean the property up, boy scout groups and things and connected them with Connie and Connie, I think, has gone in some ways above and beyond and in other ways just hasn't gotten the results. I'm not pointing fingers or being critical. But if if she's at a crossroads and this has done some improving and then gone backwards over ten years of problems with this property. I think it's time to 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 prod the town into some sort of more dramatic action.
I, Rick, I happened to drive by the the subject property today.
Okay.
There's a house and then to the rear of the house, there's what looked like used to be a three or four car garage. A workshop barn, whatever structure. That structure doesn't even have a roof on it. It's got four walls. In in my opinion, it's a safety hazard. So I think that adds an additional concern to the property. And might allow this the town to be more involved than just the blight ordinance.
She is actually, I did ask her if she had considered to all to do to pass where it's blight and and zoning. And she said, I if if she would consider doing that. And she said, I've been doing that where she's following up. She's cite citing both zoning issues and blight issues. No, I hear that. I hear you. I hear you. And I will mention that to her. I made a note of that.
The building official, the building official can get involved.
Yep, yep.
Or the fire.
Yep, I will work on that.
I just please express to her that we feel a great great sense of urgency that this come to a finish. And that we love a real detailed update on this at our next meeting, a very formalized.
Yeah, I yeah, I that's that's not her fault. That's one hundred percent my fault. I followed up with her. But I didn't follow up with communicating to you guys and I apologize for that.
Yeah, if you draft an email to her and copy me.
I will. I will do that.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to ask a question.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, because I can't see you all. I know last meeting we were talking about getting a report from Connie. Do we have an idea when that's going to be coming?
She currently does not have time. She's scheduled to work less than nineteen hours. And she is so busy with enforcement. And permitting that she's been in the twenty five thirty hours a week. She has no time to. She's doing the work. She has no time to spend time telling people that she's done doing the work. You can certainly ask her to do that and I will. I mean, I will ask her to to put something together and sets up time aside.
I don't think we're asking her to put something together. I think we're asking to see what she has. You know, I'm sure she keeps a record of what open enforcement actions are probably. Why can't you just share that with us?
It's I she keeps it in in individual file folders. On the right hand side of her desk, there's a stack of ten or twelve. And in there she writes the notes that that how she's following it up. And she keeps that all together because it's easier for her to trace back. Instead of having a file and then a computer file and another file. So that's that's her mode.
Go through and make a list of of a dozen files in about five minutes.
Yeah, I will. I could do that for her too, because she's got the information there. She is just flat out.
I I get it.
Yeah, we've had so far this fiscal year. We've had fifth. We have fifteen new homes.
Last week we discussed this and we specifically asked her to do a report and attend this meeting. And she's done neither one. That's unacceptable.
I that's not what I communicated to her. So you you can yell at me. You can yell at me about that.
I specifically asked her to join us at this meeting this tonight with a list of all her enforcement actions.
But you asked it through me. You asked it. I guess you asked her through me and I'm apologizing because I I did not do that. I did not. I don't recall you asking that she attend the meeting. You wanted the information at this meeting and I forgot. I I'm sorry, we are so busy in with permitting right now. It's crazy.
We would like
We have constituents in this town that are upset about zoning issues. We, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, need to know what those issues are so that we can we can answer our constituents.
I for the fifth time, I will apologize, Bob. I let you down. And the commission down. I apologize.
I'd like to move past this right now. At the bare minimum, Paula, I think what we're looking for, we'd like to know what open enforcement actions are out there. A list of them. A one one paragraph summary. I would request that Connie weigh in on one of our Zoom, one of our meetings so that we can ask questions if appropriate.
Okay.
But I'm gonna, Bob, I'd like to leave that as a request, the attendance to the meeting. But I I I don't want it to be optional that we get a list of enforcement actions and then lets us discuss them. And if we feel we need to get her to have enough time to come to one of our meetings, I'll pursue that through Mark. Okay?
Rick, I I don't. I think it's fruitless to get the list if she's not here to answer any questions. We're going to have questions regarding the list. So it's useless to get the list without her here to answer the questions we might have.
Let's take this in a two step way. Let's get the list. Let's discuss it. And then if we feel for the meeting after that, that we would really like to have her. in our meeting after we see the list, I think that that's a more prudent way to approach it. Anyone else have some thoughts on this?
I have some light.
Similar ideas, exactly aligning. What?
I have some light to shine on this, on this particular issue. On this particular property. Just to give everybody a little bit of background, this goes back, I was thinking about this after the last meeting. This particular property and the complaints on this particular property go back to when Carl Fontenot was our town planner. Okay, how many? And I was counting back. I think it's either five or six. So just like, just to give everybody a little insight, that's all.
I was being conservative when I said it goes back more than 10 years. I mean, 10 years. I remember this as always being an issue before our Planning and Zoning Commission. It's gone on forever. Bob, I have a similar level of concern as you, but I would rather have us as a commission come up with a formulated request for info, information. And I'd rather discuss it without Connie at our meeting and then go to, after we discuss it, decide what we want to do as a group.
Your call. You're the chairman.
None. I don't want it to be like that. That's my perspective as an individual. You have yours. That's why I'm asking for the rest of the commission to weigh in. I'll go, go with whatever the, the general feeling of the commission is.
Well, I just, I just think it sounds like we're kicking the can down the road yet again. You know, this thing's been going on, like you said, for 10 years. And now you want to postpone things for at least a couple more meetings.
It isn't like she's not doing anything.
We have to address it. Let's, let's be big boys and address it right now.
She's being a big girl and addressing it right now, honestly.
Paula, we, I think what you need to, to Connie is, we need to know exactly where it's at and what she's and, and we have a lot of questions. And if, get her to this next meeting, let's do that. Bob, your sense of urgency, I respect. Okay?
I don't know the property, but I'll make an effort to go take a look at it. So I'm better reformed for the next meeting.
What was the address again?
I notice it every time I drive by it.
149 and then 159.
149, 159.
Yeah.
Yes.
Route 6.
Yep, you can't miss it.
I'm afraid so. Okay.
I think it was like that when I first got my driver's license when I was 16.
I'll take some photographs.
There you go.
Yeah, and Vera was 11.
Yeah, I'm a youngster. Let's not forget.
I just hey, I may feel the youngest, but I'm not. Anyway, all right. Point well taken, Bob. Really well taken. Let's see, that was under communication reports, but that was also open discuss. Anything else we would bring up under open discussion? Audience of citizens, anyone? Anne? Didn't hear word one out of you tonight. I guess we're
No, and you're not going to.
I miss your voice.
No, I'm just listening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ian, thank you for, for coming to the meeting. In case you, any of you don't know, Ian, you were on Planning and Zoning about 20 years ago for a period of time, weren't you?
Yeah, it was, my son's now nine, so it was nine years.
Nine years ago? For what short time we had from you, we got wonderful input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn. Everyone, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. Good night.